In at 7 o'clock, staff meeting. We have a newest member on the board.
Welcome.
Marlene?
Marlene.
Marlene.
Marlene, would you tell us a little bit about you?
Yeah, I'm Marlene I D. I am a social worker by trade. I work with Department of Children and Family Services. I am a mother of three children. My husband and I, we live at 21 Jordan Road. Been in our house for the past close to three years. So I'm here just to serve my community and help in what capacity, any capacity I can. And that's why I went for school community before, so did not make it. But I find a way to serve the community whenever I can. So that's why I am.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Well, we're gonna start the meeting on petition 968.
May I? Okay. The Halifax zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 2nd at 7:00 PM in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall on the application by Frederick J. Brady for a special permit to raise and rebuild a single-family home located at 620 Mont Ponce Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by Frederick J. Brady Jr. of 620 Mont Ponce Street, Halifax. As shown on Assessor's Map 19, lot B, Book 1175, page 231, the applicant is seeking a special permit to raise an existing structure and rebuild a single-family dwelling using the existing footprint, with the exception of the rear staircase from the deck which will jut out four feet. This will constitute an alteration, an extension of a non-conforming use in accordance with the town of Halifax's zoning bylaws, Sections 167, 8B and 8C. The area is owned commercial and it's petition number 968.
Okay, you wanna speak to the application? Tell us what you're trying to do.
I'll tell them. It's jetting out those back stairs up the deck, screaming on first floor deck. Have a deck on top. Well, now that we have, the house is only 16 foot wide, as you can see on the thing. So we wanna put this staircase on the outside. It should be here, right here.
So the staircase is gonna be on the other side of the building?
The what?
The staircase is gonna be on the side?
Yes, just coming down the side where I have the most room. That's the only thing I wanna put.
Anybody have any questions?
Yep. The existing property now, is it usable? Are you living there now?
It's usable, will it sometimes? Yeah, I'm there most of the time.
Yep.
I gotta build it, it's about ready to go as soon as we get through this, to get, to get the permits.
Sure.
As soon as Halifax to come back with the thing they just sent the paperwork into the, look over, put a septic.
Right, yep.
And then when that comes back. He, I talked to Bob, he thought it was like to find.
Tina? You have any question?
Is there a site plan anywhere on this? I know Mont Ponce Street is pretty close to the water everywhere.
That's the site.
Yes.
Sorry. Someone's picking up these are kept tonight.
Are you putting a new foundation in?
Yep.
Okay, but is it the same location?
Yeah, okay.
It's not gonna go beyond the same footprint?
Just those stairs.
The stairs are kinda like a deck, right?
It's like deck stairs going right off the deck.
Yeah. So the foundation is literally the same footprint that the previous house, the stairs aren't on top of that, okay. Do you have to go to the Board of Health, Ryan? Do you have to?
I've been to the Board of Health. I'm just waiting to hear back from them. They sent some paperwork in for the septic that had to be looked over twice.
So your septic is already designed and all that, ready to go?
Oh, yeah.
You only got 15 feet of frontage on Mont Ponce Streets?
Yeah.
Yeah, just look at that.
We share like with the, my neighbor. It's like 30 feet, just share that whole.
You share the driveway?
Yeah, pretty much.
Tight corners there.
How big is the lot?
A lot?
It's a lot.
What is the lot size?
I'm not sure. It should be on there somewhere.
Is that fix his games? Oh, yeah? No? I mean, that's what comes up on my Google, that too.
Guess I do have some.
I think there's probably the house next to it. Did you Google it?
Yeah, cuz I'm like, this was very skinny.
This is the one? This is the one there?
Oh, this is this one, this one right here.
Yeah.
So you between those two houses?
Yeah.
This one and that one. This is, oh, come on. This is his house, right? You are between the two houses, so?
Yeah.
The big one.
This one, no, this should be that one. This one over here. That's 18, 618.
618 or 620?
I'm 620. 622 is on the other side.
Five, okay.
What is the assessed value of the house? Because it says here you're going over 50% of the real estate.
Yeah.
What is assessed for right now, as far as the building is?
I think it's $240.
And what is it costing you to build?
$450.
It's 50%.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, the land I'm taxed more than on a house.
Talking to Halifax.
You talked with your butters?
Uh-huh.
No issues?
They're appreciative.
So?
Is this, okay?
No, no.
Is this where you're gonna, your permanent home gonna be?
Yes.
Not gonna do it, then sell it?
No.
No, move it.
So the, so the special permit, us requiring it under the bylaws, I just wanna be clear on how we're issuing it cuz there have been questions on this in the past. So we've established recently that 16721, as long as, we can issue the permit as long as it's not a detrimental, a detriment to the established character in the neighborhood. So I guess to that point, there are other lots that are similar inside this, in that area, right?
Yeah.
The, what you're doing on the property is an upgrade, it sounds like, to the property.
Oh, it's definitely an upgrade, yeah.
It sounds like the character of the neighborhood will be enhanced, not detrimental by what you're doing. And it looks like the two things you're applying for, for the special permit for is the alteration, which is 50%, which we kinda just covered. So you do the special permit for that, obviously, cuz that's over 50%. And then the extension, so it looks like you're staying within the, you're updating it, but it seems like you're staying within the footprint of the foundation. And the only thing you're doing is adding those stairs for a point of egress, and it's not becoming part of the foundation. So it sounds like all of that stuff, from at least my perspective, is all within the bounds of the special permit. So how, so it's, you got, you have the plot plan back there? Does it say how many feet off the back lot line then?
It doesn't, and that's kind of my concern. Like, I have no problem rebuilding the house, but I know that we've had a lot of problems getting closer to the water. And I know that's a huge part of the contention of a lot of people in town.
What do you mean getting closer to the water?
The deck you said is closer than the existing.
No, no, it won't be any closer to the water.
Okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
It'll be the same.
It's the same.
Uh, width up from the house. It's only the stairs.
The stairs are off to the side.
Off to the side.
Okay.
That's not on the water side, that's on?
No, no, no.
No, okay.
Do you want this to ask?
No, no. That was, you were thinking the same thing I was thinking, it sounds like.
Yeah, I was just like, it's awfully close already.
Yep.
And it's tight. Like, I just looked on the Board of Assessors and it's less than a tenth of an acre.
Yeah, yeah.
It's tight, for sure.
Yeah.
All those houses over there are all like cramped together, so?
Yeah, they're all cottages.
So they were all cottages at that time. Any other questions on the board?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve petition number 968 as presented.
Motion to waive the onsite?
Oh, yeah, she wants to, you can waive the onsite with the motion.
Okay.
Just add the?
I think we'd all be onsite.
All right, I'll make a motion to waive the onsite inspection.
Second?
Yes.
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 Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
So that, we usually do, we are required to do an onsite inspection that would take another meeting away, and you have to wait longer. So we just waive the onsite visit. So we can act on it tonight if we want it.
Now we'll make a motion. To approve petition number 968 as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Myself, yes. Passes by to zero. You approve that?
So we're good then?
You're good.
That was a good one.
I need the paperwork.
She'll give you the one down.
Yeah, so you have to wait 20 days.
20 days, anybody?
For any appeals, somebody may have. That's why I said all that stuff, in case somebody appealed it. All of that stuff would be clear in the conversation we had cuz sometimes it's all murky, so. But I don't, if somebody did appeal it, it's pretty clear. You have to wait that much time and then you should be good.
Then you take your permit, register it to registry deeds and you're also?
Yeah, she'll walk through.
They'll notify you.
Yeah.
Okay, now what do I have to do for registry deeds? I already did the conditions.
Right, so the decision letter is your special permit? So you want to, when you sign, say you need to fill out your documents up, you go to the clerk's office, pick up a copy, then you bring it to the registry.
Right on time. We, we, I know. I am okay with that. Thank you, have a good night.
7:15.
The Halifax zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 11th at 7:15 in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Ryan Walsh for a variance against a constructed attached garage to be located at 207 Kramer Drive, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Ryan Walsh of 207 Kramer Drive, Halifax, as shown on the Assessor's map, 60, lot 585, Book 43899, page 308. Applicant is seeking to construct a 24-by-30 attached garage with a master bedroom above which requires a variance of the side yard setback from 30 feet to 20.3 feet in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 16711, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, the area is owned residential and it's petition number 966.
You wanna tell us what you want to do?
Yeah, so I got two young girls. My house is getting a little cramped. I need a little bit more room. So we're gonna put a garage addition on to get a little more space.
I made the site inspection Saturday. And I looked at the land itself. There's really, I know we talked last week of trying to push the garage back. I think if you see right here, there is kinda like a hill out back. So that kinda cuts down on the space that's in the back of the yard. There's really no way of doing anything in the front. The only place you can put it is on the side. Another to make it functional, so that the house itself, they wanna put a space upstairs just because we need the room, you know? And looking, there's a fence right on the other side of the yard, so for the person adjacent to it. But even when you look across the street, two car garages with a room up above, so it fits right in with the neighborhood. There's no, no problems with fitting in the neighborhood itself. And I did ask him if any of the neighbors, any of your butters complained about it. So far, there's no complaints, that it looks pretty good.
So the hardship is the topography of the one?
I'd say the hardship is the topography of the back, yeah. There's no way you can move it back into the yard and make it really functional without, without existing house. But it fits, it fits the neighborhood.
Yeah, I agree with Jerry. I get a drive-by, I looked at the property. It looks pretty narrow. I noticed the hill in the back. Putting it out back, I don't think it's possible. So I think off to the side is the best, best place to put it. I don't think it's without, it's within the character of the neighborhood. So. But the lot being narrow and the hill in the back?
Yeah, it really, it will miss whatever you can do out there. Yeah.
How, nothing to say?
Anybody else?
It seems like they have hardship. And we've had two hearings and no one's come to say anything about it.
Right.
Yeah, I can't get a full, all my news is said they would sign a form, they had a, they were just showing their support at one score, even the one closest on the left side.
And no news is probably good news for you. Sometimes people show up, and it's not, it's not usually good, so. It's definitely, I drove through it. It's also within the established character of the neighborhood.
We've already went on, went on to the onsite. Now we'll need a motion to accept the, to accept petition.
I'll make a motion to accept petition number 966 as presented, second.
Tina?
Yes.
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 Myself, yes. It passes, five to zero.
Look at that, moved today. Wow.
Did we ever get a?
Pajirog tech. Yeah.
From the?
She gave birth yet?
I'm working on that next. So my, my neighbor actually across the street who put his garage addition on, gave me his. I didn't, the plans are quite a bit of money, like, so I wanted to make sure I got this approved before I went through and did the plans.
Was the act tech that was here, correct? She was pregnant?
Oh, yeah, that's our friend, I G B. Yeah, she told us all about it.
She was still pregnant, sadly, so.
Good news.
Yeah, yeah, she fixed it. Yeah, she, any, any day this week, it'd happen.
That's what we're concerned about.
Is that okay? Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too.
Did we ever get anything from the building inspector on Lake Street? Nothing, huh?
No, nothing.
Well, the country club of state wants to continue. Now, on 318 Plymouth Street, they wanna come in for an informal hearing.
Of 318?
That's the one that's emailed, you want your contract? Isn't that the?
They, they wanna put a restaurant and?
At 314.
314.
314.
They wanna put a restaurant and medical center and an auto parts store?
I didn't know it was all that stuff. Um, I, I, I look at auto parts because?
A medical?
Yeah, it's a medical building.
Medical building, restaurant.
Rizzi was just a parts store, right?
I think, yeah. I was saying?
No, it was always, it was always a double building there. And then the parts store was separate from the building. But it's actually a drive-through restaurant, you know what I mean? So it does have a window there.
This is where his stand?
Yes, yep.
So they, wait a minute, there's, they, what did they put up? It's like we can wait till the discussion, I guess. They wanna put multiple buildings in?
One building to contain the medical building and the restaurant. And then there's a separate building.
Which is gonna be on a one acre lot that they've carved off of the entrance that they aren't lining up with the stoppage.
Well, and this, this one here, when you look at it, the entrance is lining up with the?
Oh, yeah?
It looks that way, and it's lining up.
That's for the storage units. They wanna propose a storage unit out back where they weren't gonna put the 40B.
Wait, you're kidding?
No.
I can't keep up.
Well, the ground, the ground won't hold it. I mean, the?
Yeah, yeah.
The ground can't hold that stuff, you know? But that's, they're gonna try and, so.
But I think what they were looking for, they were looking for us to give them a variance before they even have a site plan review.
Can't do that.
We can't. And then, you know, they wanna?
They're sending emails, I'm like, we can't. We're not gonna be able to tell you any of this stuff.
And they want us to, you know, as far as the parking, they, they don't have enough parking spaces for all of this, so.
I haven't heard that before, that's interesting. I haven't seen this movie. This is a sequel.
Are we on camera?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
I think like, I don't know, 20 people watch it, it's fine. Same 20 people every time, I'm like.
But I mean, there's really nothing we can do until the planning board does their site plan review.
Yeah, they have new?
It may never make it here.
Yeah, so.
No, I think she politely said to them every time, like?
Multiple times?
Yeah, she has.
I think he wants to know?
So we can't?
Before they go forward.
I think of looking, looking for a little feedback.
Yeah.
Which, that's fine, people do, but I don't know how much feedback they're gonna get.
Do you want to give them any feedback?
I just?
They can watch the video, look at our faces.
That would be step one, yeah. Yeah, they can come. I mean, we always have people come by. We usually tell them that we can't tell, right? Like, I feel like it's, it's?
Well, they can come by here, don't they? These people, these people are from way in Midwest.
Oh, it's like the guy from Tennessee they came. He was all bunged, and I didn't honor the fact that he flew from Tennessee. It was like, well, he still doesn't have a parking spot.
You see what you're getting yourself into?
I know, you sure? Welcome, I mean, welcome.
This is going very nice tonight?
This is, yeah. That's how it always starts, was people's first meeting.
Oh, I'll be home by 8 o'clock, maybe 9.
The honeymoon period, yeah.
Yeah, we do get the certified mail, then, then you're in.
Way to start doing the laundry.
Oh, man.
Does that come after washing the van?
The van? We've been asking that van for quite some time. Still no van.
Well, we signed the bills, right?
Bills have been signed, yep.
Just need a motion to approve this.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the bills for the Halifax, the Plimpton Halifax Express for $90, W B Mason, W B Mason for $3704.
Second? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, myself, yes. Any other business?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 11th, 2022.
Second?
Yes, any corrections, deletions, or anything? Tina, yes? Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Oh, this is really going good.
And you guys need to approve the other minutes cuz I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 6th, 2022.
Second?
I wasn't at that meeting either, am I?
You weren't?
Yeah.
It was four feet, wasn't it?
There's only three of us there, so we've got a majority, we got two.
There you go.
And Jerry, could you just sign those minutes?
Sure.
So we sent the building inspector that letter on April 12th, and it's May 2nd, asking him to come to our meeting on May 2nd. And you got no response whatsoever?
No.
Has he been on vacation or something?
No.
Okay.
So how do we get, how do we get him to respond? Should we write him another letter? Or just?
Do you wanna remind him of our letter? And that we saw that he didn't come to the meeting? I, that's pretty unusual. Normally you get, like, a written response or something, you know?
At least he, he had the courtesy to say, you know, what did he find, or?
Maybe he's looking into it, I don't know.
Too busy again?
I don't know.
Maybe.
The building's probably finished now.
Could be.
Can we do anything to? Oh, we can't?
No, I think we've done what we, we can do, yeah.
Cuz he's the enforcer, right?
Yeah.
Unless, unless we write him another letter asking him for?
Oh, definitely, I think if we don't receive a response.
He'd be so kind to go out there and check in on?
Get a report for it, yeah.
Just, you know, either come over here and a written report or a verbal report, one of the other.
Do you not have a reader, see?
I know, I know.
Okay, so we just?
I know. I mean, it, it, I guess it's not in the realm of typical. I just worry that people are gonna start doing whatever the heck they want, right?
Yeah, well, they already are.
I think you're right.
There's nobody enforcing?
Nothing.
No.
Even when, like, we're doing it in a meeting, like, sending it. I don't know what would happen if somebody just called, but.
And they're gonna come back at us and, whether they can?
I hope not.
I don't see how they can. We've done exactly what we can do. We've sent the, you know, request forward. We can enforce it, so we've done what we can.
Well, this is the second time we've asked him to look at things.
Yep.
And he has never, you know, he came with a?
It is, it's, it's, actually, I think the third, right? So, cuz we asked him to look at the, the guy who lives next to the industrial park, and he did do that.
Yep.
And we asked him to go look at, like, that multifamily in the business, which I think he looked into. And then it, this is just, I don't, it seems like it's? Yeah, the level of involvement is dropping, but I don't know. Maybe he's got something going on, I don't know.
We're sticking a reminder.
Yep.
What's that?
Reminder.
Oh, yeah.
I don't remember that, thank you. We'll see him, we'll see him in June.
No, July.
July, August, September. What else we get?
It's the, the minutes, something you have.
Those, the minutes?
We don't have the minutes.
Anybody wanna open all the kind of ones?
Nope. All one.
Any?
Maybe we have a talent bag for it, but I don't think we have an opening. But we? Maybe we have a talent bag for him, but I don't think we have an opening, but we can.
Talent bag.
Invite him. I think he's. And then, what's on here?
What does he want, he wants to come in on the board?
Think so, yeah, he felt like a talent bag for him, right?
I know, I know.
Huh?
I'm sitting on the floor here.
I know, we're like, stealing chairs from the audience up here.
We haven't had this before.
I, this is, I know, we've usually been like, we're out being able to jump in.
Aren't we full already? We're full already, yeah, we're full.
I guess so.
Yeah.
We could put him on a reserve.
Yeah, I mean. Normally, I mean, normally when we get these, we have them come in and introduce themselves, we can have that. That's what we all might do.
See what his agenda is.
Yeah. Oh, is that, is it, oh, this is it?
This is it?
Oh, right, this is their, they got a whole map here, though. The, the big building, the mall they own.
Yeah, it's a little, little.
I can't follow all the emails, it's.
There's, there's a little copy over right there.
Oh, yeah.
Do you really wanna go with it?
Oh, yeah.
Can you see it?
Oh, yeah, it's like three things in one. Wow!
Yeah, I just want to see that, I'm just gonna look. I can't.
They, they're gonna face the auto.
Well, it's better than the storage building, they're gonna put in down there.
From 106?
This is, this is where the fire stand is right now.
It's a lot of table. It's still high.
So, just if I go farther, we can see it.
Yeah, this is gonna be the new auto parts store. You go beside the other auto parts store.
Right?
Right beside it.
The one that's there is dead, all the time.
They were gonna go.
This will, the restaurant would be, this is the drive.
So if you're looking at the fire stand.
From what I heard, last time they were there, and.
So is the satellite here?
They're gonna put storage units out back. Just think.
If you turn this one, right, well, if you rent it, it's put in street, I'm just, right?
This is what it goes towards, I'm too.
That's the current red building across there.
The white one should be red, yeah.
The store, like, this is like the plaza, we keep, I think, it's like.
So, here's, here's where the store, the.
Red building.
Yep.
Right now, it's.
It's right there.
It's over there.
The other red building goes.
Anyways.
No, like, that's what the, uh, the auto parts.
That's a lot.
The auto parts store apparently was, was facing this way, and he wants to turn it in this, this, this position.
I thought that the red building was gonna be turned, yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, I thought.
You're looking at it in a way, it's not like.
He wants to turn this thing.
How is all this working out?
Yeah, but, no, that's, he wants to have this one here.
This is what.
I don't, I don't understand that, yeah.
It's gonna be quite a discussion.
This would be the restaurant right here, and this will, you can have a drive-through, if you come around and put up the drive-through here.
Any other business?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, I can't, I'm not.
They're looking at the, the, the way from there.
Yes, I am, yeah, going down 106, yeah, yeah, yes, I am.
This is the medical building, or.
It's like the small block, it's all. It's like ordering my phone, it's like, yeah.
I mean, at least it looks a little.
Another pot shop?
It could be.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
So, what's in the middle, do you know?
I don't.
Probably another smoke shop.
It should be another, another store, whatever, but it's, it's nice.
What'd you say?
I said probably another smoke shop.
That's what I said.
From one, from.
We've got plenty of pizza, why don't you get the munchies?
Why not?
Allen Dees? The ground won't even hold that.
I'm sure. We've been talking about that for years, back there, if they're asking for. The neighbors back there, we've been talking about everything that's got there.
Maybe with a variance here.
Looking to.
And for parking, right?
Yeah. They having problems with a lot of out there.
And where's he want the storage?
Huh?
No, the storage is, you know where we get the.
Came up when signing.
Like, here?
Yeah.
Which is in back, but, yeah. They're talking that, instead of go doing with the 40B, it's a storage, it's not here, instead of the house.
Yeah, we just want to need plenty of work at school.
Anybody make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, we did, we did.
Do you guys wanna reorganize?
What are we doing?
Nope.
Nice balance.
I think we're good, right?
Yeah, that's gonna be an interesting meeting, for sure.
The discussion.
Just, uh, just to, just to give a quick update on the bylaw committee.
Oh, did you guys meet?
We did meet.
Oh.
We did?
Uh, yes, we did.
Oh.
I didn't know that.
We went over a few things, and we started going over definitions, and everything was seen to be fine, and then I said, wait a minute, uh, multifamily development.
Yeah, okay, there it is.
And, you know, we, we went over it a little bit, and then the, the lawyer decided to push that off until we get into further into the meat of the whole bylaws.
But it's the same way, same guy?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Always, always the wrong.
I just wanted to make sure, you know, it was gotta be passed over, now wait a minute.
Really?
I wanna read this thing here, because.
Isn't that, isn't that the reason everybody's?
Up, a little upset, but I mean, uh.
Doing it.
They wanna look at that there, and there's a couple of other definitions, so they wanna look at once they get the meat of everything.
Yeah.
Before they change a definition, if we're changing something else in the bylaws. But we did meet, uh, and there will be another meeting, uh, probably another week or two.
Okay, I'll have to just keep checking, like, 'cause I'm not getting emails for them.
That could change. The meeting used to be, if there was, there was change on us, it was gonna be on the.
It's gonna be Wednesday, and then it was another Wednesday.
And then that could cancel, and then it could push off for the next meeting, yeah, the next Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't get an email, so I had no idea.
That's the irony, because the email was.
I worry that they're doing, they're trying, like.
Exactly.
There's definitely seven needs to be updated, and we all know that, but they're, you know? I just wonder what, like, I know that guy, like, he's talked a little bit about, like, the cluster zoning and trying to update all that stuff, 'cause I was reading some of the stuff a while back, and he was, he was putting in there, and it, it's just, I worry a little bit that they're gonna change some of the definitions to make it.
It's, um.
Like, where they, like.
I think that, you know, there's a couple of members have, uh, some real good thoughts.
Yeah.
They've, they've, yeah, uh, is that Bob Ross?
Yeah.
He's, uh, he's very thorough.
Yeah.
Uh, he's looked at all the other towns.
Yeah.
Uh, he's really putting in all, a lot of effort into reading everyone else's bylaws, to get a good feel of the, as to what's going on. So we, there is a lot of good input that everyone is throwing in there, so it's not a.
Oh, I, no, yeah, yeah.
A brush over, but it's.
I want, like, a lot of times, people from, like, we'll have the lawyers come in and, like, push, like, the cluster zoning and stuff like that, and I think that the intent of a lot of the stuff that we have in there is pretty good, like, it keeps stuff separated, and keeps stuff from being overbuilt in one spot, and I think that's what I think we like, like, and I think we, we've kinda stuck with. I just wonder where it's gonna end up.
Yeah, but there is a lot of thought going into it, so it's, it's, it's.
Could be a lot.
Yeah.
Could be a lot of work.
Yeah, I think the idea they wanted to bring something to this, uh, annual meeting, town meeting, and that's, that's.
It was a bone doll, yeah.
It'll be next year before any of this year gets brought up, and hopefully we'll have it pretty well squared away by then. But there is a lot of, uh, a lot of stuff to go through.
It's before the election, this Monday coming?
Monday, yeah.
Yep, yep. But that's the, that's the update, just so, uh, you know what's going on.
All right. Progress.
Progress.
No other business?
I guess not.
All right.
I know.
Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, oh.
All in favor?
Got it.
Yes.
That's right.
John, they're all this easy.